Good evening, planning commissioners and staff and guests. I would like to call this planning commission work session to order for Thursday, June 5th, 2025. My name is Brian Halbert and I'm acting chair of the Clark County Planning Commission. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to announce that our planning commission work sessions are hybrid, both in person and by way of WebEx. For the virtual and in-person members of the planning commission and staff, please ensure your microphones are turned off or muted unless you are speaking. There will not be any public comment during this work session, but members of the public can watch and listen. This evening's agenda is planned as follows. We'll hear from Jenna K. on Comp Plan Policies, Climate Element, Chapter 14, Part 2, Rural and Natural Resource Elements, Chapter 3, and Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Elements, Chapter 7, with Climate Integration. Then we'll take comments from members in the planning commission from there. So I'd like to get us started by turning this over to Oliver.
Good evening, planning commission members. And for the record, Oliver Ojaco, Jenna will be going through the materials before you. I know that you have been eager to get briefing on the climate bill since the two advisory committee that helped us to get here completed their work. I appreciate the fact that some planning commission members have been following the work. I also, as I have said in the past, wanted to commend the two committees, diverse group of volunteers that reviewed the bill and the guidance from Commerce and helped us to get here. So with that, we know that there are about 32 policies and goals and about 100 and more policies. But Jenna, I've done a great job trying to integrate the recommendation and policies where staff believe that they fit. We are not changing any of the recommendation of the group. We are presenting it as their work. By the time we go through public hearing and council, any of the policies that may look smushy to you, maybe enhanced, updated, or whatever, but that's where we are. And I also want to thank Amber Smith for filling in on behalf of Ms. Chris Cook, who is on vacation. So she will be helping us this evening to answer any logo question that you may have. If you require us researching more, we will come back. So with that, Jenna, take it away. Thank you, planning commission members.
Thanks, Oliver. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jenna K. with Community Planning. And as Oliver mentioned, I'm going to be talking about the goals and policies for the new climate element this evening. We can go to the next slide. My plan for the presentation is to plan, is to spend a few minutes just reviewing process and the materials we provided to you, and then we'll spend most of our time reviewing goals and policies and having time for discussion. Next slide. Okay, so just quickly, as a reminder, I've been before you a couple of times. We looked at this slide at your May 1 work session covering key steps that have been taken, you know, so far in development of the climate element. You know, at the moment, we are at the start on this slide where we are briefing you, and then we'll be meeting with council in the near future to make sure you all know what is in the proposed new climate element. And ultimately, these will make their way to you all in a hearing towards the end of the comprehensive planning process, and then your recommendation will go to the county council to vote on these. And as a reminder, we have a legislatively mandated due date of the end of this year to implement this new piece of legislation. Okay, next slide. And so just as a reminder, at your May 1 work session, we reviewed 10 county-wide planning policies that largely restate excerpts from House Bill 1181 or focus on coordination with the cities, tribe, and regional partners. And so today, we're going to be looking at the 20-year county planning policies proposed for the new climate chapter. And I'm also going to show you how cross-referencing policies in other chapters is looking. So we're going to look at Chapters 3 and 7. That will be a very quick review. But of all the chapter policies that have already been shared with you all, these are the only two that have already come before you where we are doing any kind of climate integration into them. However, we still have several chapters to go to brief you all on. So you will see additional climate policies in future work sessions when we bring forward the land use, the transportation, housing, environment, and capital facilities and utility elements. So there's some integration in each of those chapters as well. So I bring that up because there are some policies that the CAG voted on and is recommending that I'm not talking about today because you're going to see them later as part of a different chapter. So I'm only going to be presenting what is in the new Chapter 14, and then what it looks like with how we did some cross-referencing in Chapters 3 and 7. Let's go to the next slide. And then also, just as a reminder, these 20-year county planning policies are a recommendation from our Climate Project Community Advisory Group, or CAG. They did reach unanimous agreement on a lot of things, but there were four goals where they did not unanimously agree on the precise language that's in the draft before you. I will call those out when we get to those items and give you a brief explanation of why they voted the way they did. And next slide. Okay. And then the one other thing I wanted to share before we start looking at the policies themselves is at the last meeting I met with you all at in early May, there were a couple of questions and interest in, you know, things like cost implications and other questions like that. And we have some information related to some of those questions. So I provided a bunch of items as background materials in your meeting packet. I just wanted to talk through what each of them are. I am not going to go over them in detail, but they are here for reference for you if you find them helpful moving forward as you review these policies. So I'm just going to talk through what was in your meeting packet beyond the policies we're going to look at. So first, I provided a memo that we wrote to you all that explains the CAG's vote. So that is where we documented, you know, these are the four items they didn't reach agreement on, and here's why. We also posted a copy of the letter from the CAG and the letter from the Environmental Justice Coalition that they each sent to you all previously at the end of their process, just as a reminder of, these groups put a lot of time and effort into these policies, so just wanted to keep that front of mind. We also posted what's called the HB 1181 Requirements Matrix Draft. This is a very large table. It is primarily for, it's something staff is using. We need to be tracking that any policy that's being proposed is meeting the requirements of this legislation. So we have a big table that's doing that. But it's there again for reference because there's so much, it can be, you can kind of get lost sometimes in this long list of policies, but that's sort of our, oh yeah, what hazard is this addressing and what is it doing? So that table is there for reference as well. It also does a crosswalk between the CAG numbering system and the numbering system that's in the comp plan. So we had to renumber things to match our numbering system in the comprehensive plan. So if you had been following along with the CAG's work and, you know, you were interested in G19P4, that now has a new number, and how we're going to present it in the comp plan. And so this table has the two numbering systems side by side, so it is there for reference if helpful. We also included four analysis tables in these materials. The Level 1 analysis, we have one for each resilience and greenhouse gas reduction. When we had draft policies late last summer, we did a very high-level assessment of those policies across several different criteria. One of them was cost, you know, other criteria were things like feasibility, authority, like can the county even do this, things like this. The CAG weighed in on how to weight those items. We scored policies. And so that, the tables there for Level 1 give you this very high-level assessment of draft policies at that time last year. So that gives a little bit of information for those of you looking for that kind of additional insight. And then the Level 2 analysis is just on those policies that scored the highest in the Level 1 analysis. So it has about 15 policies for resilience and 15 for greenhouse gas reduction, where it goes into a little bit more detail. And I'm just going to keep using cost because that came up a bunch last time. That's where it teases that out a little bit more and addresses, you know, whose cost would it be? What's the cost of an action? Things like that. So it provides a little bit more information about some of the policies. So again, reference tables if helpful. And then finally, we did provide a working glossary of terms. This is something we developed as we worked with our advisory groups and questions came up. We will likely take some of these terms and add them to the comp plan, but we are not going to put everything that's in this glossary in the comp plan. But it's there again for reference if you want to know what we're basing something on or what some term means. All right, so that's that, and it's there for reference if you want it. Okay, so I think with that, if we can go to the next slide, I think, yeah. Okay, I'm going to transition now to talking through the policies. And so we're going to start with the Chapter 14, Goals and Policy Table. And we're going to take our time, and if we need to take a break as we go, we will because it might take a little while. And then Jeff, I can take over sharing my screen. Now I need to find my notes again. Hold on. Okay, so for Chapter 14, we're actually going to start in the middle of page 3 because we already looked at pages 1 and 2 at the last, at the May 1 meeting. So I'm going to scroll there where it says County 20-Year Planning Policies. That's where we're going to start because everything else we already reviewed. A few items just to orient you to this document. You're going to see at the end of each goal and policy, letters in brackets. So you may see GHG, or RES, or you may see both of those acronyms listed there. That is the notation we are using to indicate if a policy is a greenhouse gas reduction policy, a resilience policy, or both. So that's what that is. The policies and goals are also grouped by very broad categories, the first of which is health and well-being, which you see on this page. So my plan is to go one category at a time. I'd like to read the goal and then highlight the key points of the policies underneath that goal. And then I think I'll pause at the end of each category for any clarifying questions. So there'll be, there's seven categories, so we'll do sort of seven chunks, and then we can do any more in-depth discussion at the end. So that's, I was hoping that would break it up sufficiently, but we'll see how it goes. So with that, the first goal, 14.2, is in accordance with all applicable laws, facilitate a just transition to net-zero greenhouse gas emissions and equitably enhance community and ecological resilience to climate impacts. And there are a couple of policies under this one. Policy 14.2.1, which starts on page 3 and then continues to page 4, is really a set of guiding principles for implementing climate element policies. This came out of our work with our Environmental Justice Coalition and kind of captures recurring themes that just kept coming up in their engagement work on how to equitably implement climate policies. So that's what 14.2.1 is covering. And Policy 14.2.2, so at the bottom of page 4, is around evaluating future comprehensive plan amendments, associated plans, policies, regulations, development regulations, and so forth in the future according to the sort of core requirements of House Bill 1181, which is 3678.0709. And then Policy 14.2.3, this is essentially a cross-referencing policy where we are noting policies in other chapters in the comp plan that are helping support this goal as well. So you will see those when we come back with the land use chapter in the future, but that's what it's, it's just pointing to some other policies in another place. All right, so the next goal, 14.3, I'm on the, towards the top of page 5, is ensure the most vulnerable county residents do not bear disproportionate impacts from climate change by protecting community health and well-being from the impacts of climate exacerbated hazards and prioritizing focus on overburdened communities. There are a number of policies under this one. 14.3.1 is essentially a set of equity considerations for implementing policies under this goal. 14.3.2 is around habitat reduction and population control for arthropod disease vectors and zoonic disease reservoirs, so insects and rodents. 14.3.3 is around protecting the health and well-being of people who work outside. 14.3.4 is around improving access to resilience and mitigation information through a hazard mitigation communication program. And I scroll. 14.3.5 is around developing a comprehensive data and community-based assessment framework to identify the needs of people who are most vulnerable to climate change exacerbated hazards, and then taking action to improve the adaptive capacity and resilience of these high-risk communities. And then 14.3.6 is around development of resilience hubs, which are essentially community-serving facilities designed to support and connect residents, coordinate communication, distribute resources, and reduce carbon pollution while enhancing quality of life. And then there's a whole list of things to consider in how to do that. All right, the next goal is establish and maintain ongoing consultation with the Kamalet's Indian Tribe, regional tribal governments, and culturally specific groups on climate resilience efforts. Policy 14.4.1 is in regards to consulting with the tribe, other regional tribal governments, and culturally specific groups on projects to identify important sites and resources in the county that are threatened by climate change. 14.4.2 is in collaborating with these same groups to develop culturally appropriate climate adaptation, community education, and emergency response strategies. And 14.4.3 has to do with ensuring that cultural resources and practices are resilient to the impacts of climate change. Okay. So the next goal, 14.5, this goal is the first goal that the, that I'm going to mention that the CAG did not reach unanimous agreement on. So the goal is promote holistic and resilient local food economies. And so just a little bit of background on what they weren't agreeing on. So generally, in concept, group was in agreement. It was really down to the particular word choice and how it's worded. So there was a slightly different wording of this goal a couple meetings before their last one, and then due to, you know, number of comments on it, we had a subcommittee work with staff on some revisions. It came back to the group at their last meeting, and all but three CAG members at that meeting were okay with it. And those who were not okay with it, their concern is around the term holistic and finding it, you know, a bit confusing and not as clear a term as they would like. So that was the concern with that wording. But otherwise, policies under this goal, 14.5.1 is around expanding local food security under a variety of climate, you know, future climate conditions. 14.5.2 has to do with taking steps to preserve existing agriculture by prioritizing things like infrastructure, and it goes on to explain that. 14.5.3 has to do with supporting relocation of food distribution nodes located in hazard-prone areas. 14.5.4 is on establishing sustainable and climate resilient agriculture production areas or corridors so you can have better coordinated transportation of food. 14.5.5 is about the development of a comprehensive food access and availability plan. 14.5.6 is about promoting and supporting public and private food-producing gardens, market farms, and urban agriculture to help with more reliable food access during severe weather. And 14.5.7 is on the development and implementation of right-to-food policies and strategies in the county. 14.5.8 is about enhancing food waste prevention and diversion programs throughout the food system in the county. And 14.5.9 is around collaboration with community partners on public education for household and business food waste reduction strategies. And then 14.5.10 is another cross-reference policy where we are pointing to policies in the rural and natural resource element related to rural, rural center, and agricultural lands. So we'll look at those later on today. Okay, the next goal, 14.6, this is another one where the CAG was not quite in unanimous agreement on the precise wording here, but again, generally was in agreement with the underlying concept. And it was the same explanation as the last one where it was the use of the term holistic that a couple folks were concerned with, and it, you know, it was added in before the last meeting when they were voting. So same explanation as the previous one I just explained. So all but three people voted in support of this one at the last CAG meeting. But, and I don't think I read the goal. So the goal is promote holistic, regenerative, and sustainable agriculture and landscaping community-wide that provides high-quality food while reducing greenhouse gas emissions and improving resilience to changing environmental conditions. So the only concern is around the term holistic, again, in this goal. For the policies under this goal, 14.6.1 is around the county facilitating collaboration with community partners on providing support for low- and zero-greenhouse gas-emitting farm and landscaping equipment. 14.6.2 is around helping fund either grants or incentives to reduce agriculture and landscaping-related emissions associated with things like fertilizer and amendments. 14.6.3 is around expanding community-wide education on regenerative and sustainable agriculture practices, and there's some examples listed there. 14.6.4 is around reducing barriers to agriculture throughout the county. There's a list of ways that might happen listed out there. And 14.6.5 is support conservation programs, research, technical assistance and resources to provide direct and indirect financial assistance to farmers. And it goes on to expand on that a little bit. Okay, got just a couple more in this category, and then I'm going to pause. Just one more. Okay, one more goal in this category, and it's to connect outdoor recreation to public health, improve access to green spaces, parks, and recreational areas which provide opportunities for physical activity, stress reduction, and social connection, contributing to overall health and well-being, while also mitigating urban heat island effects and enhancing resilience to extreme weather events. And our one policy, 14.7.1, is pointing to existing policies in our Parks chapter because we, we had some other language in there at one point, but realized it was kind of duplicating existing Parks chapter language. So we are just pointing to those policies, and I'll show you those later on in the meeting. All right, I'm going to get some water and pause for any clarifying questions so far.
Yeah, that was me. Go for it.
So on 14.2.1.
Yeah.
It starts out by saying evaluate who is most impacted by the issue or decision. What is a who? Is that demographics? Is that region? Is that by level of income? Is that by gender? Is that by age?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's written very broadly, so we would need to figure out how we would do that. So I think the main point here is to ask the question, who is being impacted? But the specifics on how we would do that, we would need to figure out.
And then on 14.3.1, implement policies under this goal in collaboration with community-based organization. What's a, can you give me an example of a community-based organization?
Yeah, I think we're thinking of that, again, fairly broadly. So any organization here in the community, so that could be anything from a nonprofit to a faith-based organization. It could be a local business. You know, I think the main point here is to work with individuals and organizations here in the county when we're.
So it's purposely left very broad?
Yes.
And again, I, I was part of those, I listened in, I don't understand holistic myself. So when I read that promote holistic and resilient local food economies, I don't have these. Is that, is holistics? I didn't look, I didn't get a chance to look at the word definition. Is holistic in there?
We do not have it in our glossary right now. I think if that is a term that stays in the language, it's probably something we should add a definition for. I would encourage you to look at the memo that explains the CAG's how they voted, because I did attach, some of them provided in writing their explanations for why they voted the way they did, and I think in their own words kind of explain those who were in support of the word, how they're envisioning what that means, and then, yeah, and how they would recommend defining it. So that's there for your consideration, but yeah.
And I listened in on those things.
Yeah.
Myself.
Sure.
And then on that same area, 14.5.3, support relocation of food distribution nodes located in hazard-prone areas. So we have to data-fide there? Are there any in the hazard-prone hearing now?
So we would need to do the research to identify if that is an issue, you know, and that again, looking at where are the major.
This may not even be an issue then.
It could be a non-issue, but we are not able to do that level of research at this point. Yeah, so we need to double-check. I think things, you know, and both in the county and with the cities, understanding where, where are the major food warehouses, you know, and any major routes that food's coming in on, understanding if anything's in a hazard area.
Hey, Eldon, Brian here. If you've followed the Clark County Food Bank at all, they do a lot of that. They distribute food to areas where it's most needed and similar to what you're talking about here. So just one point of reference.
And if I may add, there are new information that we don't have now that could become available in the future in terms of the state or the federal mapping out future because of the climate change, future hazard areas or flooding areas where we would then be able to, as you mentioned, food banks and other community-related activities that support the community so that they're not on harm's way, for example. So this is just providing that opportunity to do so when more information becomes available. As you know, when we have extreme flooding, the federal government change flood maps and raid out, give us the new flood plans, if you will. give us the new flood plans, if you will, and areas where we should step away from building going forward. And those are some of the things that will change how we do things going forward. I know that the state is currently mapping out hazardous areas which will become new to us and areas that we should be mindful in how we permit what happens in those areas to minimize potential hazard in the future. So that's really what this is getting at, is not wishy washy, but at least some of this is not. What you need to do now is how you prepare for those eventualities, knowing that you're going to have that risk in the future because of change in the climate.
I guess my, I guess my confusion or misunderstanding is really what is a food distribution node to be that size? Grocery store.
Right, so it.
Serve food.
Right, it could be, you know.
Be just a food bank.
Right, it could be a grocery store. It could also be like the warehouses where, you know, food's coming from further away, stored in a warehouse and then is going out to grocery stores, things like that. So sort of major food distribution.
Yes, you're right. So if that's the case and you plan for potential eventualities, then you minimize the risk. That's really what that is getting at broadly speaking.
It just sounds kind of wishy washy because like a food distribution though could be a lot of things. And it could be if they're prone to blood damage, maybe they don't need to relocate, maybe they need to add better drainage or. I mean, this says support relocation. Maybe if it had more verve, there's support relocation or mitigate things that might cause that to be in. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. That's why I said earlier that some of this may seem wishy washy. We may have to refine it furthermore to just make it clear as to what is it that the group were really trying to accomplish. But it's all about prevention and mitigation, if you can, yes.
And the same going with the next policy, 14.5.4, establish sustainable and climate resilient agricultural production areas?
Well, I, I think this is an example, think super high level policy. We would need to do the work to define exactly what we mean by that, right? Like this, we don't have those defined right now, right? So this is a guiding policy to guide future work that could happen.
But you say you're going to do some work to define that, is, is there a value in doing that?
Yes, you know, agricultural production areas. There are some areas here in the county that we can say non-agricultural production areas unlike what you find in, let's say, Eastern Washington, that is predominantly agriculture. So take for example, the, the food, food valley area where you know is a very rich agricultural area. It could also be prone to flooding in the future, who knows? So what we can do to preserve and enhance those areas. You mentioned earlier about how do you mitigate this? Do you go and raise your foundation up, you know, in case of flooding? So we are still going to look at how we implement some of this and recognize and identify those high quality agricultural area in the county and find the ways to in the future sustain them or help them to be an area that could be protected if we make changes in what is going to be compatible with those areas as they continue to be viable. And it's pretty much about conserving our high quality agricultural area. That's really what this is getting at in, in their continued activities to provide local food and other resources here in Clark County. That's what this is getting at. So we still have to identify agricultural product.
Yeah, it, it just sounds too wishy washy. And then going on to 14.6, well, again, that term holistic, but 14.6.4, reduce barriers to agriculture throughout Clark County. All right, do we know what those barriers are now? I mean, when you say you want to reduce something, you've got to have a, a level where you think you're at. Otherwise, how do you know you're reducing?
Yeah, I mean, I think this policy, this, you know, was developed based on a lot of feedback from various people. So the policy lists some examples of that where we have people working or trying to work in the agriculture sector who identified these. So that's where they're coming from, but yeah, so I would consider the items that are listed there as some examples.
And then the last one, the goal for 14.7, the connect outdoor recreation to public health. Aren't we already doing that?
There is some, I would say duplication in some of these concepts or reiteration of things that are already happening. I think that's why you'll see the policies underneath point to the existing policies in the Parks Plan. You know, but I think we also really wanted to listen to the feedback we were hearing as part of this process. And people were trying to make the connections between outdoor spaces, health, and that there's a resilience component to that. So, you know, so it stayed as a goal, but there aren't any new policies being proposed. You know, we're, we're pointing to the things that would help achieve that.
Pointing to it, so.
Yeah.
What's the point? All right, I'm done.
Those are all, those are all. Those are all. Planning commissioner wouldn't, Eldon, that's all good observation. This particular goal here that you reference him, for example, some of this is going to be done through some educational effort. It's not to say that it's not happening now, but we will also take a look at our parks and open space plan to see whether this goal or policies are already in place. And if it is, we will refer this policy or goal to the parks and recreational element. I think we have that chapter seven here. So we'll go over this and see where some of this interface and we can make a recommendation that they belong to that chapter. And some of this may already be practices that are already in place which could occur to continuing education about the relative correlation between outdoor and regression or exercise to public health or individual health. So I take your point.
Hey, Mark, are you listening in? Do you have any comments or questions?
I'm with Eldon. I mean, some of this is, the, the concept is vague. It'd be nice to see more specifics, but I understand they're not there right now, so. It is a little frustrating. Thanks.
All right, Jenna, take it away.
All right, we're going to go on to the next category, which is green jobs. I'm on page nine, and there is one goal in this category. Promote long-term economic development and job generating activities that will improve environmental quality and climate resilience. And then there are a couple of policies underneath that goal. 14.8.1 is around supporting development of a local diverse green workforce by facilitating opportunities for green jobs with a focus on job creation within communities most impacted by climate hazards. And then the, the policy goes on to list some example fields and some considerations for any county initiatives related to this. 14.8.2 is around supporting local business efforts to bolster climate preparedness and continuity of operations. So this is in anticipation of more sort of severe weather type hazards. 14.8.3 is around promoting more of a circular economy here in the county where we're using more, you know, reused and recycled materials and less raw materials. Okay, so I'm going to pause there because that was our smallest category. Any clarifying questions?
So this Eldon, so when you say promote long-term economic development so that improves environmental quality and climate resilience, does the long-term economic development mean it's sustainable? In other words, not a flash in the pan and five years later it didn't pan out because it didn't, wasn't economically.
Sure, I, I do think that is, that's how I'm interpreting that language in terms of long-term, meaning that it's, it's durable over the long term and.
Sustainable.
Yeah, mhm, yeah.
Okay. I, I just have a hard time with these things because it's so wishy washy. But it is a policy to me, it's more interested in how you're going to achieve these.
Which is the next step, right? You know, it's, it's hard because these are, they're very high level concepts, right? Yeah.
I used to work as an auditor and all these things that I would never be able to audit any of this stuff because it's too vague. I mean, I come up to you, Jenna, well, how did you promote this? Give me a, show me. And you're all.
That, that's true, and these policies are written, you know, at a high level, very general, that it gives you the flexibility as a policymaker when things come up, whether it's through budget or other policies, how you make that commitment to allocation of fund on what you think is your values or whatever. But you can also use the policy to justify making that decision. So you give yourself a broad opportunity to do so.
And I understand that, it's just.
And, and for staff, when the implementation comes, it gives us the opportunity to also say, yeah, this strategy will get us there or match us towards the goal. So that is how sometimes, you know very well, that's why these policies are written in the manner that they are.
That's all for me.
Hey, Mark, you just jump in anytime you want, Mark. Mark, you're muted if you're talking.
I'm sorry, what? I was muted.
Yeah, Mark, just say, jump in anytime you were, I saw you talking, but we couldn't hear you.
Okay.
I think we're ready for the next policy.
All right, I'm going to keep going. So our next category is ecological stewardship. The first goal here is protect and plant more trees in rural and urban areas and equitably increase tree canopy cover through targeted planting and maintenance support. So under that goal policy, 14.9.1 includes some equity and implementation considerations that came out of feedback on these policies. 14.9.2 is develop and adopt a tree plan and implementing ordinance to maximize planting and protection of trees in alignment with best practices and relevant state and federal laws. And then there's a list of items that would need to be a part of that tree plan work. Go onto the next page. Okay, and then 14.9.3 is around expanding and seeking funding for things like tree planting, tree maintenance and so forth. 14.9.4 is around ensuring new tree plantings are the right species in the right place. And that can help with both, you know, things like shading buildings so we don't have to use as much energy to helping cool hot areas to making sure we're not planting, you know, invasive species throughout the county. 14.9.5 is around establishing, enhancing, maintaining policies that support diverse tree plantings, green spaces, gardens in both new urban and rural developments. And then there's a list of examples of how that might happen after that. The next goal is increase, enhance and protect county owned plantings and green spaces. Policy 14.10.1 is in regards to expanding youth environmental volunteer opportunities and service learning related to tree planting and green space stewardship opportunities. 14.10.2 is related to enhancing, expanding, protecting and maintaining county owned green space and tree canopy. There's some other sort of details in there, including assessing tree canopy on county owned properties and setting tree canopy targets for county owned green spaces. We currently don't have that information or targets. 14.10.3 is around in green space tree planting and restoration efforts, choosing a diverse selection of native drought and pest resistant tree shrubs and so forth. 14.10.4 is a cross-reference policy pointing to one of the policies in the Parks chapter around accessibility to county parks. And 14.10.5 is around collaborating with schools and other community based organizations on, you know, seeking funding and educational awareness on volunteer opportunities and fostering pride in the county's parks and nature spaces. All right, the next goal, 14.11, is promote regenerative and sustainable forestry practices community wide. 14.11.1 is around expanding the county forestry team and working with other local forestry resources on promoting and providing education on sustainable forestry practices. And there's some examples of the types of topics that might be covered. 14.11.2 is, this is an advocacy policy, so this would be for the council to strongly advocate to the state legislature and Washington State Department of Natural Resources on prohibiting clear cutting on forested lands and protecting legacy and old growth trees and avoiding use of pesticides. And 14.11.3 is around utilizing the Washington State Department of Natural Resources reconvenance of state forest lands and trust land transfer programs where possible. There's an explanation of each of these in the glossary we provided, but these are two tools the county has where there are some state lands that can be transferred to county ownership. So these are two different pathways for certain lands that qualify. The next goal is around improving public awareness on environmental topics. And there's one policy, 14.12.1, under that, which is very similar to the goal, but again, it provides examples of what those, that education could cover. All right, I'm going to pause there. I will say that there are several other environmental policies that will show up in the environment chapter that you'll see when we present that to you. So any clarifying questions on that category?
Sorry, I left my mic on. Hey, Jenna, how have you coordinated any of the tree program with the city of Vancouver? They've had a tree ordinance for 20 years now. How does it align with what, what you were proposing here?
I think generally it's consistent. We did have city staff help review policies and give us feedback along the way. And the other piece that's fairly new, I don't know exactly when it showed up, but the county's Clean Water Department and Public Works, they've had sort of increasing tree requirements through the county's stormwater permit. So we have made sure that what's in here is in alignment with the requirements that they have now. And anyway, so there's sort of new requirements coming from different directions related to trees that we need to make sure we align with. And I guess I would just add, what's different about the county and the cities is then we have our rural, you know, we have both an urban area and then we have, we have forestry and then we have urban forestry, right? So that is quite distinct from the cities.
So when it, when it comes to increasing tree canopy cover, do we have a, an idea how much, do we have an inventory of what, how much land has already got tree canopy cover? In other words, we want to increase from where we're at to, do we know where we're at on tree canopy cover?
Yeah, so that's an interesting question. So we do have some tree data. We, however, this has not been something the county has really done much with historically. So the Clean Water Division recently, or is maybe in the process of finishing a tree canopy assessment for all the urban parts of the unincorporated area. I don't believe they had the funding to look at the rural area, so that is a space where we have some work to do. There, there are high-level data sets, like we can get land cover data. And the other thing I would mention is, when we were doing our greenhouse gas emissions inventory, our consultants did need to try to assess tree cover change over time. And so we do have, again, sort of from different imagery and data sets, we can see that, and we can see overall the county is losing canopy over time. So I'm giving you sort of a mixed answer. We have some data, but this has not been, you know, we, we don't really have, we haven't had tree canopy policies in the past, right? So this is a bit of a new area.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the county or, or someone is going to try to do a better mapping of what our tree canopy is.
Yeah.
Besides satellite mapping or?
Yeah, so I do think what Clean Water is doing is much more detailed. We had a chance to review.
The whole county?
A draft, so they've only got the urban area so far. And anyway, so this is new territory where more work is needed. But I do think, again, the big land cover data does show general tree loss, but I think there's more to, to dig in there, right?
And, and the reason I bring this up, it'd be nice, 20 years from now, somebody says, hey, we started in 2025 with this much tree cover, tree canopy cover, and look, look where we're at.
Yeah.
We've got this now.
Absolutely.
And that, that would be the ideal, but can't do that unless you know where you're at.
Right, well, and I think I'm gonna, the policy that says develop a tree plan, it should include the baseline data, right? Like, if you're going to make a plan, you need to know what your, what your baseline is, so you know what you're planning for and all of that. So it's, again, it's some, right, it's the detail we don't have right now, but we're trying to guide us in the direction to do it, yeah.
I, I hope that's the case, that somebody's going to do a baseline.
We are going to do baseline, we can't just say we're going to have a tree ordinance, for example, without doing some baseline information. I know that the county do a flyover on an annual basis, so it's not something that is out of the realm, but it could be done. I hear what you're saying, if we are going to adopt a tree ordinance, for example, other communities have three ordinances, we, the county, will have to do an inventory of where we are and where we are heading, for example, and what type of, because you can't just say we want a tree cover or a tree cover ordinance, you gotta be able to identify what type of trees need to be planted and, and shrubs or whatever the case may be. So we will indeed embark on having a place to start with, so we can measure success over time, because we are, again, every five years, we're supposed to be monitoring how we are implementing some of these policies. So that's, that's, to me, is where we'll be heading if we proceed with advancing or the council, in this case, making a decision, asking us to develop a tree, a tree ordinance. Those are some of the work that needs to be done to back that effort up.
Yeah, and I would hope that when it comes to not only doing the baseline and instead of saying increase, we're going to go from this many acres to this many acres.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, increase could be, well, we just, you know, marginally increased it.
Sure, yeah.
Because we know that trees are going to help.
Yes, particularly on, on heat island areas. I think Public Health did produce a heat index, so we know, we have that there already. So those are some of the progress if we haven't, you know, encouraging folks to plant trees or less asphalt in some of their development. Yes, we have a, a place to start.
And then under 14.9.2 says establish community-wide tree canopy cover targets and tree equity goals. What is a tree equity goal?
Well, we'd need to write that into this plan, but the, the idea being, Oliver was mentioning, for instance, Public Health has data on how hot, comparatively hot, different parts of the county are. So the idea of, we, this is just an example, we might want to target planting trees in the hottest areas in the county to help create shade and cool them. So again, we'd need to, we'd need to come up with what those equity goals are, but we know we have areas that are hotter, you know, because of past decisions and how development has occurred, that we could help cool, you know, more places, so they're more, you know, some places aren't more, way more hot than others, essentially, in, in ways that we can control. We can't control everything.
All right, but it's kind of wishy-washy. And then in 14.9.4 says ensure new tree plantings are the right species in the right places? Now, I know that, like, I planted fir trees before, and I always made sure that the fir trees were, were grown in the same elevation as that my place is. Is that the kind of thought here or, or what?
Yeah, well, this is a, it's a common concept, I think, for those who work in, in forestry. So it's, it's a few things. So it's what you said, Eldon, right? Like that you're planting trees, it's the right habitat, right, for the tree to be planted in. In an urban environment, it can have some other meanings, too. So one is, you don't want to plant a tree with roots that are going to buckle the sidewalk, right? You know, so again, planting an appropriate species for the surroundings. And then it could also be, I had mentioned, one of the, trees are really interesting because they help with both resilience and sequestering carbon, so they help with the emissions side of things, too. But my understanding, they are most helpful with reducing emissions by creating shade on buildings, right? So you don't need to use your cooling unit as much, right? So there's a bit of a, how do you, how do you plant shade trees in places that can help reduce energy usage?
Or a mix of evergreen versus deciduous.
Well, exactly, right. So there's a lot of considerations, and again, probably more wishy-washy than you would like in terms of, it's not defined here, but it's a general concept that we want to move forward in the work we do around trees.
All right.
Yeah.
And then in 14.10.3, I'm sorry, 14.10.3, in green space tree planting, what is a green space tree planting? What is a green space?
That is a good question. I actually think this may be a new definition in the Growth Management Act, so there is now a definition that was part of this HB 1181. I can look it up, I don't know it off the top of my head, but that, I'm generally thinking about parks and green spaces, but we can get you the definition, Eldon, we can look it up.
I can look it up, too.
Okay.
It is in the new glossary, too.
Oh.
Is it? Okay.
So the skeptic in me regarding trees and, and here, and we're also approving high-density areas, more homes per, for acre, any available land left over gets an ADU. So you're, you're clearing trees to do higher-density housing and put ADUs in. What a battle.
So this is Amber Smith here. Just to clarify, in the Growth Management Act, it'll be in Section 3670A 030 in subsection 22, it defines green space, and it's pretty lengthy, it has subsection as well of A through F that includes where it can be found in one of the more of the following attributes, and those attributes are listed there. But it is new in the Growth Management Act.
So Brian, you were just saying some, you were sort of mentioning, talking about the housing. I didn't catch if there was a question in there or more of a, more commentary?
Or sarcasm, that's.
Okay.
Okay, then the last one for me, 14.11.2 about strongly advocate to prohibit clearcutting on forested lands. Clearcutting is not illegal right now. I mean, foresters have to have a plan to reforest. So what's, what's the, what's the thought there, then?
Yeah, and I will say there were some CAG members who this is to them the most important policy on the list, they felt very strongly about this. So I think the idea of, I think they are not happy seeing large tracts of land where trees are cut down, particularly on public, you know, they see it on the state lands happening. So that's the concern, that they see timber sales happening for really large areas still, even though there have been changes to the forest practice rules and stuff over the years. So I think that's the, the key concern, and that they think, you know, trees are really valuable in a lot of ways. So that's the concern, and the tree stuff gets really complicated because the county doesn't have authority on a lot of tree-related things. So this is an advocacy goal to the legislature and Department of Natural Resources because the county has no role in what the forest practices are, right? Like, this is a state-driven thing, so this is a, we can't, we can't really directly actually impact that as a county.
Yeah, but sometimes clearcutting is the most economical way, and if we, and I'm not a forester, I'm just saying, if we're saying we can't clearcut anymore, my, my guess is it's going to drive up costs for timber. So.
Not only that, Eldon, but the schools benefit from forestry, too.
Timber sales.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I understand.
You can also do selective cutting, so there's so many ways to look at it.
Yeah, but this is saying prohibit clearcutting, so.
As Jenna was saying, this is more of advocacy and.
I know, but.
Where appropriate, can the DNR or even through some public effort acquire the property? And there, there are just so many ways to look at this. It's not that you cannot do clearcutting, we don't own the land, we are just, as Jenna was saying, this is more of an advocacy, where appropriate, the county can step in and acquire the property and, and save that old-growth forest, if you will. So again, this is, yes, you say prohibit.
And I think a better term might be to, to reduce clearcutting or, I don't, because I'm all in favor of protecting legacy and old-growth trees and avoid the use of pesticides, but to say prohibit clearcutting, okay, what does that mean? I have, I own five acres, does that mean I can't clearcut two acres of it?
If you're building a home, we can't say you can't. We can also encourage you to minimize how much you cut. I know in some cities, you cannot cut certain tree diameters.
Yeah.
Depending on where they are, and that's just city rules. Why do they do that? It's another way of dealing with their climate policies and other policies that they may have in place. So this, I, I hear what you're saying, it could be.
I, I just don't like the term prohibit clearcutting. I think it could be worded differently, just to me, it sounds like this is catering to the people who, like you've mentioned, don't like to see the hillside cleared. I think it's pandering to the, to that group. That's all my comments.
All right, ready to keep going? Or do you have questions, Brian? Sorry.
No, I don't have any questions. Mark, are you following us? Mark says no.
Okay, I'm going to keep going. All right, next category is transportation and land use. I will flag that this sort of category in general overlaps quite a bit with other, you know, chapters in the comp plan, given the comp plan largely is focused on land use and transportation. So the first goal here is reduce vehicle trips and miles viewed through an equity lens within the county through changes to land use, transportation infrastructure, and commuting options slash modes. And then I have a policy under there that is just pointing to, it's about 40 policies that are across, it's, this is the land use, housing, and transportation chapters. This is a mix of existing policies that are already helping do this, as well as some additional policies that did get recommended by the CAG, but we decided they fit better near similar policies in these chapters. So you'll see these policies when we present those additional chapters to you. The next goal is reduce emissions for county-owned vehicles to zero. And policy 14.14.1 is around green fleet policies for the county's fleet and, you know, switching those over to electric, hybrid, or other no, no or low-emitting fuels, encouraging carpooling, and also using renewable diesel as a transition while those, some of that technology is becoming available. 14.14.2 is around installing publicly accessible electric vehicle chargers at county properties. Goal 14.15 is encourage resilient development within the unincorporated urban growth area and away from areas that are prone to climate-related hazards such as flooding and wildfire. This is the third goal where the CAG was not quite in unanimous agreement. And background on that, this goal had slightly different wording going into the last CAG meeting. It did have the term holistic in it, but after discussion, the group, some group members found that confusing in this context, and so they voted on the revised wording without the term holistic, and all except for one CAG member were in support of this revised wording. That's now on this, in this table. All right, 14.15.1 is around incorporating climate resilience goals and policies and regulations as appropriate into all essentially future county planning documents, so whether that's, you know, the natural hazard mitigation plan, future update to the shoreline master program, and so forth. 14.15.2 is around planning and building new facilities, utilities, and infrastructures to either. to either avoid or withstand hazards like flooding, wildfires, or landslides. 14.15.3 is around where appropriate, supporting retrofitting, relocation, or acquisition from willing property owners of structures that are in hazard-prone areas. And then 14.15.4 is another cross-reference goal pointing to other policies in the Land Use Chapter and Environment Chapter that relate to this goal. All right. So I'm going to pause there at the end of that category. Glad to take clarifying questions.
So, so just the goal itself. Encourage resilient development within the unincorporated urban growth area away from the areas that are prone to climate-related hazards such as flooding and wildfire. Don't we already do that? We have laws about what you have to do and flood planes and.
We, we do generally, but there's nothing, you know, that says. So I guess one example of what I think about this is we know where the county's wildland urban interface is, right? That's essentially one of the higher danger wildfire areas in the county. There's nothing that says you can't expand your urban growth boundary in that direction. But I would say a goal like this would direct us to, maybe you shouldn't. If you're expanding your urban growth area, maybe you shouldn't expand towards a higher-risk fire area, for instance. So it's providing essentially another layer of, you know, try to avoid the hazards if you can, if you're going to build things and put people there. But there are, like you said, Eldon, we already have critical areas, regulations, right, around landslides and flooding and things like this, things like that already. Any other questions for this category?
Jenna, the other thing about this is we're not thinking, thinking really, and we're not really thinking predominantly in the Vancouver UGA. You have urban growth boundaries of La Centre. You have urban growth boundaries of Town of Yarcolt, Barrow Ground. So as Jenna was saying, this is just broadly speaking about encouraging those cities, if we will, to consider what areas that they expand to in the future. So this is not limited to just the Vancouver unincorporated area.
All right. Next category, buildings and energy. So first goal there is promote energy-efficient buildings. This is the fourth and final goal that the CAG was not quite in unanimous agreement on, and I'll just read an explanation. So at the last CAG meeting, all CAG members voted in support of this goal except for one, who voted no to highlight their concerns with the impact that Initiative 2066 has had on the building and energy policies. So just as a refresher, that is the initiative to protect access to natural gas that passed last fall, that, you know, wasn't, when we started the work, didn't exist. Then it got approved by voters in, so Sunrise voted no on this goal to highlight her concerns with the impact I-2066 has had on the building and energy goals and policies. And she would like to see them strengthened in light of the March 21st, 2025 King County Superior Court ruling, where a judge found I-2066 to be unconstitutional. And I can just give a brief update on that. That ruling has been appealed, so it is on its way to the Supreme Court. So we're still waiting on the outcomes of that decision on that. But, so that's what that, one person wanted to highlight, who voted no for that goal. But they did expand that, they don't per se have any issues with it. It was more to draw attention to that general concern. Okay. So for under this goal on promoting energy-efficient buildings, Policy 14.16.1, again, these are kind of equity and coordination considerations for implementing the policies under this goal. 14.16.2 is around collaborating with utilities and other partner agencies on free and low-cost options for energy audits and performance standards on commercial and residential properties. 14.6.3 is around collaborating with utilities and other community organizations on programs related to weatherization, energy efficiency upgrades, and heat capture for commercial and residential buildings. 14.16.4 is around incentivizing energy-efficient building design, including passive building 14.16.5 is around the county supporting the best available technology improvements for residential and commercial HVAC equipment, such as heat pumps, and then other types of building equipment and appliances. 14.16.6 is around collaborating with service providers on picking up at reduced costs and disposing of aging appliances to help support replacement with more efficient ones. And 14.16.7 is around collaborating with the community organizations and utilities to provide education on energy-efficient products so that people are actually taking advantage, you know, optimizing the use of them and getting, you know, seeing the savings from using a more efficient product. Okay. Goal 14.17 is promote a just approach to increasing clean, renewable, and diverse building energy options in unincorporated Clark County to achieve net-zero greenhouse gas emissions. Policy 14.17.1, again, has some just considerations on implementing the policies, the other policies under this goal, such as, you know, the various scales of projects and making sure, you know, benefits are going to those with the least resources. 14.17.2 is around promoting self-reliance and community capacity to respond to emergencies. And it lists some examples of that, such as with distributed energy resource and energy management systems, microgrids, and virtual power plants. 14.17.3 is on pursuing innovation to expand and improve access to diverse, diversity of clean renewable energy options. And we do cite the definition for renewable energy resources that's in state law and give some examples of how, how this, what this could include. 14.17.4 is around incentivizing new construction to be future-ready, to include design elements that support building owners and renters to easily adapt in the future to either changing energy needs, preferences, or conditions over time. So this could be things like buildings so that it's not hard to add an electric vehicle charger in the future if you want one, or if you want to add solar panels to the building in the future, you, you know, set yourself up so that you can do that easily. 14.17.5 is around community education on building energy choices to support informed consumer decision-making. Goal 14.18 is reduce building energy emissions for county-owned and operated buildings and facilities to net zero. So 14.18.1 is around auditing county buildings and facilities. 14.18.2 is around developing and implementing a county-building greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan to help get to net zero. 14.18.3 is about integrating clean renewable energy sources and backup infrastructure into building energy and operations. And 14.18.4 is around purchasing renewable energy certificates as an option, though prioritizing actually reducing the emissions here as the higher priority. And then goal 14.19 is promote green building and sustainable building practices. Policy 14.19.1 is around implementation considerations for this and making sure that these policies are helping remove barriers for those to be able to access the benefits from green building or enter the workforce in green building. 14.19.2 is on essentially developing and adopting a green building policy for the county and learning from other places, like City of Vancouver is working on one right now. 14.19.3 is around incentivizing green building programs, such as, you can get various kinds of green building certifications for new construction, and there's some other examples listed there. And 14.19.4 is around facilitating education opportunities on, related to sustainable building. All right. That's the end of that category. So glad to take questions.
I have one. On 14.16.1, about that second bullet point there, removing barriers, and it says, living in unincorporated Clark County regardless of language spoken, immigration status, disability, whatever. What is the immigration status that it's referring to? Is that like visas, green cards? Or is this referring to undocumented?
Um, I, so these examples came out of our work with the Environmental Justice Coalition and the types of things that were coming up in their engagement. And again, it's generally being used, but it can be a barrier, right? If needing to fill out forms, if you don't have certain types of documentation, you can't fill out, right, certain forms to get access to whatever it is you're applying for. So I don't think I have an answer to your question, Eldon, on the specificity of what that means.
Because if it's going to turn out that this is referring, that this is undocumented as in this, then, you know, I would, I'd be against this. But if it's visa, green card, work, work, work programs, something like that, I think that'd be okay. But the way it's stated could be, would be a problem for me.
Okay.
That's the only question I had. Comment.
Jenna, many of these, back to 14.16, a lot of these policies are already part of the Washington State Energy Code for buildings. And why do we restate them as opposed to just saying per the Washington State Energy Codes? All of, a lot of these are already incorporated and enforced, like preparing for solar energy on buildings is already a requirement.
Yeah. So I think we are, we do understand, and the state is like progressively, right, pushing efficiency and things like that over time. So we are aware of that. I think we do have some worded wording in here around like incentivizing and support. I think we want to leave open the opportunity that the county could go after grants and things like that to help make things more feasible or more affordable that are, anyway. And we, my understanding is there's multiple pathways in the building code to get to certain endpoints. So again, if the county can, though I don't know.
Not as many as I used to.
Okay. But anyway, so I think we want to leave open the door to having policies that if there is grant funding or something like that, that the county can then offer back into the community, that we could do that. So I think some of these policies are kind of serving that purpose of, we've, you know, we've been seeing the state offer grants around heat pumps and things like that. So if we can make ourselves eligible for funding, why not, essentially? But we do understand that a lot of this is already happening because of that, that building code.
Thanks. Mark, any comments from you? Mark says no. Let's go on to the next chapter.
All right. Next category is waste management. Goal 14.20 is promote accessible waste reduction, composting, and recycling community-wide to reduce solid waste greenhouse gas emissions and support a more resilient and resourceful community. Policy 14.20.1 is around essentially helping define what accessible waste management would include, such as providing information in multiple languages and formats and things like that. 14.20.2 is on improving access to composting of yard debris and food waste throughout the county. 14.20.3 is around incentivizing commercial and household composting and waste reduction. 14.20.4 is around providing outreach, education, and technical assistance to households and businesses, as well as advocacy to the state to help with recycling and composting. 14.20.5 is in regards to repurposing organic waste for other uses, like compost, energy, or other practical purposes. 14.20.6 is a resilience policy in being able to enhance the capacity for removing and composting solid wastes and large vegetative debris in the aftermath of a storm or other severe weather event. Goal 14.21 is reduce waste emissions associated with county purchases. And we have a policy there that is around reviewing and revising, if needed, the county's environmentally responsible purchasing policy and guidelines. Goal 14.22 is encourage using less and support a local maintenance, repair, reuse, and resale economy for household and business items. 14.22.1 is, again, sort of expanding on how to do, make this accessible, the education and community programs accessible to more people in the county. 14.22.2 is around sustaining the goods reuse and repair programs that the county already runs, as well as sponsoring other types of events and programs that help with reuse and recycling goods and materials. 14.22.3 is around providing accessible public education on maintenance, repair, and reuse strategies. 14.22.4 is around developing a local pollution surcharge for large producers of air pollutants, wastewater, and solid waste that cannot be reused or recycled, which could then be used to fund complementary environmentally, environmental resilience projects in overburdening communities. Right? And that's the end of that category. Any clarifying questions right now?
So recycling, solid waste. The county's been doing this for many years. They had set goals. I mean, this is just a rehash of all that's been, been doing. I was on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for Clark County for many years and back in 2008. It's the same stuff. I don't know why it's listed again.
Yeah. Well, I think we, right, were charged with reducing emissions tied to waste, which hasn't historically been the lens through which that's been done. Though that is changing. There are some new, some new state laws are changing, like how we have to deal with organics in the county. So I think there is a lot of focus on how do we expand composting and food waste in the county, which they've piloted, right, in the city of Vancouver and Ridgefield. And yeah, so Solid Waste Team, right, is working on how to expand capacity. So I do think we are reiterating what is in another plan, and it helps us meet our climate element requirements by doing that. So.
And then the last item under 14.22.4, develop a local, local pollution surcharge for large pollute, producers of air pollutants, wastewater, and solid waste. That, that looks like that's going to be a hot button, I would think. How is that surcharge going to be developed? I mean, the devil's in the details.
Yeah. Well, and this is one, I will say, this is, this one comes from the Department of Commerce, like sample policies. This is one that's on their list. And, right, this, we'd have to figure it out, right? We'd have, what is a large producer, right? What does that mean? So there would be a lot of work to do to turn this into reality if this were approved.
I tried the shortcut where you hit the spacebar. That didn't work. Okay. So follow-up on this. Yeah, I'm against surcharges, but we're in North County. Yeah, I'm against surcharges, but we're in North County. I'm like a quarter mile south of the Lewis River, and we have recycling available to us, but a program that doesn't, I have to pay for it. So a program that would basically cover its own cost and make it available to us residences, I'd be recycling a whole lot more than I am. So I think making it, you know, urban, develop, urban versus the rural, you know, we're, they're two different animals, so I'm in favor of this part of it, so. Because I'm assuming, Jenna, that this is, even though some of these apply more to certain areas, each of these policies is basically a county-wide program, correct? Or the intent?
Yeah, unless we specify urban or rural in it, yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good point, Mark, in that there is, there are different services available in different parts of the county, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've got one category left, we're almost there. Okay, last category is county governance. Goal 14.23 is effectively implement climate element policies, and policy 14.23.1 is around developing and maintaining county government staff capacity, technical expertise, and skills related to climate change and environmental justice, so that we can, you know, effectively implement the policies here. 14.23.2 is around establishing a clear and coordinated approach for organizing implementation of climate element policies across county departments, including designated department for leading implementation coordination, and then designated staff across departments to implement specific policies. 14.23.3 is around developing climate element priority policies and greenhouse gas emissions inventory updates in alignment with the mandatory five-year monitoring and reporting schedule. We have with Department of Commerce, so that's written into the law, we have to do it anyway, so we want to make sure we are coordinating our work with the reporting we're going to have to do. And then the goal 14.24 is improve resilience of county operations to hazards exacerbated by climate change. Policy 14.24.1 is around strengthening and building redundancy into infrastructure, prioritizing areas that may be socially or physically isolated from supportive services. And policy 14.24.2 is around considering climate impacts when we're planning county response operations, specifically around public works and having to clear roads during and after severe weather events, and then the sheriff's office operations during severe weather. Okay, any clarifying question on those?
It sounds like the county's going to add more staff in another department.
Definitely it's going to require some planning on how, how we will do this, because it is so cross-cutting. Okay, really quick, I wanted to show you Chapter Three and Chapter Seven and what they look like. So I'm going to pull those up, those are the other tables. So Chapter Three is the Rural and Natural Resource Element. Bart presented this to you all some time previously. We did not edit any of the policies themselves, but we did cross-reference them in Chapter 14, and so I just want to show you what that looks like. So I'm scrolling to Policy 3.1.1, where we just noted that this was a resilience policy, was helping with our resilience goal. So all we did was add the notation there, and so basically that's what you're going to see and how we cross-referenced. So 3.1.1 has, is noted as resilience, 3.1.2, 3.1.3, 3.1.5. And I will say, the highlighting in green is highlighting the, what we added because of this climate integration. So I'm going to scroll, 3.3.1, also we flagged as a resilience policy. Same with 3.3.4, 3.5.1, 3.5.2, and 3.5.6, and 3.5.9. Okay, so these are all policies related to ag land, rural land, or rural centers, which we're aligning with some of those food and agriculture goals. Okay, so that's what the rural chapter looks like, and I'll just similarly show you the parks and recreation and open space element. These were presented to you all by Amy a while ago. Again, no changes to the policies themselves, but we did flag ones that we cross-referenced similarly, so I'm going to call them out. So we flagged policies 7.3.1, 7.3.3, and 7.3.4 as resilience policies. Similarly, we flagged 7.4.1, 7.4.2, and 7.4.3 as resilience policies. And then also 7.5.1, also as resilience policies. So this, you know, these policies are either related to, you know, enhancing accessibility and trails, or around, you know, acquisition and protection of, of parks land type, type policies that we referenced in the climate chapter. So that's what that looks like, again, not changing the substance of the policies themselves, but we are noting that they are helping us meet our climate element requirements.
Yeah, Jenna, just, I want to be clear, the only change then, when it's adopted, is that it'll have the RES in brackets?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Okay, so I have presented everything that I was going to talk through today. I will be around when we bring the other chapters forward that also have climate policies flagged in them, so that if there are questions about those climate policies, I can help field questions, but glad to answer any other questions you have now, I know it's a lot, so also glad to answer them later too, once you've had some time to sit on it.
So do we know what chapters are going to be in the next planning commission meeting?
I'm going to look at Jose and Oliver if they remember the schedule.
And the reason I'm asking, I'm not going to be here the next one, but I'm going to send comments to you guys ahead of time, and I just want to start looking at it, if I can.
I, I think the environment chapter, we're up for the next one, right?
Yeah, I think that's very.
Yep.
Right, with.
Is that the only one for the? I forget what the day is, June?
We, we changed because there, there's a holiday on the 19th, so we've moved it to the 26th.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll be fly fishing in Montana then, so I won't, but I want to get ahead, I want to send my comments.
Enjoy and send your comments to us. Yeah, those are the chapters that will be coming before the PC next time.
The environmental?
Yes, most likely, yes.
And then the one in July will be transportation, or? If you don't know, just, just.
Yeah, it, it, just curious. Transportation, land use, housing, capital facilities are, I think, the ones that are outstanding, so some combination of those.
And so you'll get the presentation, what, two weeks before the January 26th? So I'll have about a week, I'm leaving on the 19th.
I will send the draft out to you prior to your work session, if we can, two weeks out. And the last thing I will say before you come to a closure is I want to thank Jenna. I wasn't expecting her to go policy by policy, but this gives you opportunity to review each policy, but this is now available to you. I know it's a lot, as I said earlier, some of this may be, you know, squishy, but it's written in a manner that will give us the flexibility to implement them, and where we need to clarify, we will come prepared to clarify. Take your time to review this when we proceed in the future. I would just like Jenna to focus on the, on the goals and the underlying policies and see where you have questions for clarification, rather than, great job, but one after the other, this is the first time, and we'll work accordingly just to, for the interest of giving them opportunity to ask us questions and clarification. So well done, and Planning Commission, I really encourage you to read this. Oh, then I thank you very much for your input, and all of you. This is the first time we are doing this, some of this is duplicative, but we have a guidance, not to say, well, the state is making us do it, that's not the excuse, but we have a commerce guideline, and we are supposed to submit this to them to review, to tell us that, hey, they can check us off, that we have complied and followed the guideline. So bear with us as we write this and be prepared. The same is true, I don't know yet whether I'll be submitting our housing element to Commerce for their review, but that is yet a decision I have to make, but this one, we may be submitting it to Commerce for them to review and, and check us off that we have followed the guideline, and, and the second is, we have to follow the state guidelines so that we don't put ourselves in a position to be challenged, that we didn't follow the guideline and did what is required of us. So I'll stop there, but I welcome your questions in the future, and Jenna, who have done a great job here, is available, send in your comments to us, we will be prepared to respond accordingly.
Yeah, thanks, Jenna, that was, even though it was long, it was really good to go through it and get the brief on each of those policies, that was well done, thanks. It'd be, love to hear when Commerce gives you a response back on this, whenever you send it in, just as an update to a future meeting, and also if they have any comments, I guess we'll have to work through them, Jenna will work through them, and, well.
As I've said, and Jenna pointed that out, and I think Chris also highlighted that, and Amber May, on the building and energy, we do recognize that Initiative 1, 2066?
I-2066.
Yeah, it's still in litigation, we don't know what the outcome is going to be. If the State Supreme Court comes out and agree with the Superior Court judge that the initiative is unconstitutional, it's likely that we may amend some of these policies to be consistent with that, so bear that also in mind.
So I also like to commend Jenna, I think she's done a great job with a difficult job to do, kind of like the first out of the block on shepherding this through the county and all the jurisdictions and stuff, so I can appreciate the headaches that it's given you. And just a couple, you call it squishy, I call it wishy-washy. There's a lot of that in here, and I understand why, it's just very difficult to read without going, I don't understand this, this, how are you going to do this? And it just, it doesn't, I like things tangible and to grab on to, so, but I look forward to reviewing the rest. And again, I think every member of the Planning Commission wants to make sure we get this through Commerce, you know, but we have to do our due diligence, you know, and ask questions that we don't understand, so.
Mark, open it up to you, any last comments?
I totally echo, I'm in total line with Eldon, and Jenna, you're doing a fantastic job, and I'm glad that, that our lack of expertise or deer in the headlights look sometimes doesn't faze you, you just keep on going, so, so thank you.
Any other comments, business that we need to address?
No, I, like she mentioned, I'm going to go through it again, I did it real quickly before, I've been totally immersed in search and rescue stuff, but yeah, there's a lot to go through, I'll do it again, and then probably come back with some questions later, so.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions or something to update you on, all I can say is that we had, we are moving forward with the entire comprehensive plan update, we had three open houses, one in Ridgefield, two in Vancouver, the last one was June 2nd. We have online version of the same material that started from May 26, and that will go on till the end of this month, where county resident can view the same materials and be able to submit comment to us, and we will, at some point in the future, go to the council to present what we heard, and hopefully feed that to our consultant at the right to draft environmental impact statement. So that's where we are, and we'll be coming to you on the remainder of the chapters to get you through the first review. Again, the goal is to prepare you not to dump 14 chapters all at once before you, so this gradual review will give you, equip you well to first in what is going to be before you, and also give the public opportunity to review that and provide comment, that's, that's really the goal. All these drafts are also being posted on the Planning Commission website, where the public can also have access and review them.
I saw that there was only one public comment for tonight's. It was about trafficking cannabis, yes. Okay, if nothing else, then we'll adjourn. Thank you all.